The podium, just please state your name and address when you do come forward. And at this time, we would like to approve the consent agenda, which is items number one through five. And Denise, if you could please read those.
Yes, Madam Chair. Item one is approval of the May 6, 2015 minutes of the regular meeting. Item two is May Platts. Item three, 2543, 2015, rezone from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar and I-1 Light Industrial Districts to the downtown planned unit development for allowed forms located north of East 8th Street and east and west of North Weber Avenue. Item four, 2709, 2015, rezone from the RD2 Townhome Residential Suburban District to the I-1 Light Industrial District for allowed forms located at 504 South McNally Avenue. Item five, 2729, 2015, rezone from the AG Agricultural District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential District for allowed forms located west of South Enfield Avenue and south of East 41st Street.
All right, thank you Denise. Are there anyone in the audience here who have any objections to items number one through five on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none. Are there any commissioners that have any questions in regards to items number one through five?
Move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items number one through five. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. All right, the items number one through five have passed. If you're here for any of those items, you're free to leave at this time. Now we need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make amendment, I'd like to defer items 14 and 15 of the regular agenda, please.
All right, we have a motion to defer items number 14 and 15. I need a second.
I'll second that.
And then now we will vote on the deferral. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Hold on the amendment first.
Amendment.
We'll vote on the amendment to the regular agenda, excuse me. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. And now we will vote on the regular agenda as amended. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Right, the regular agenda has been approved.
Item six, 2341, 2015, rezone from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban Districts to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District for allowed forms located at 504 and 604 South Hillview Road.
Good evening, Diane DeCoer with Planning Staff. Again, the property is located at 504 and 604 South Hillview Road, which is south of East Arrowhead Parkway and west of South Foss Avenue. The applicant Bryant Solberg is proposing to rezone 1.75 acres from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential and RS Single Family Residential District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District for commercial developments. The applicant is planning to demolish the existing homes and prepare the property for developments. The parcel will be combined with the five existing C2 commercial parcels to the north and east of this development. These parcels have frontage onto a type-one arterial street, which is East Arrowhead Parkway. Due to the adjacency to the south and west of single-family homes, the applicant will be required to provide a Level C buffer yard. A Level C includes a 30-foot setback with a 4-foot-high berm or a 6-foot-tall fence and 40 units of landscaping per 100 lineal feet. The property owner could take a 10-foot encroachment into the buffer yard due to their parking lot, but the applicant has instead decided to exceed minimum standards and provide a 30-foot buffer yard and a 10-foot easement for the homeowner to the south. The 10-foot easement will allow the homeowner to the south to access their garage to the back. No access will be allowed from these parcels to Arrowhead Parkway. Access needs to come by Hillview and Foss Avenue. With redevelopment, urban street improvements may be required on Hillview adjacent to this development. The applicant should expect to provide a traffic impact study for the redevelopment. This would be required before a building permit could be approved. Per the Foss Avenue Traffic Impact Study, additional lanes and right-of-way are needed at Foss Avenue. If the rezoning of this property is approved, the applicant can construct retail structures up to 25,000 square feet along an arterial. If the rezoning is denied, the parcel will continue to be rezoned, RD1 and Twin Homes would be allowed to be constructed. Planning staff held a neighborhood meeting to review the project a few weeks ago. Jeff Schmidt was the planner available at that time and can't answer any questions you might have tonight regarding that. During previous public meetings, the opposition to the rezoning was in regards to the traffic impact along Arrowhead and Hillview. Based upon the site plan, traffic engineering comments, and the forms allowed, the traffic impact shall be directed away from the lower intensity uses. Because the subject application is consistent with the Shape Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, approval of this rezoning would be acceptable. I can answer any questions you might have.
Thanks Diane. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? All right, seeing none. Is the applicant here? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Erica Beck, representing Lloyd Companies and the ownership group from this parcel. The address is 101 South Reed Street in Sioux Falls. Again, I am here representing the ownership group Common Land Two, of which are in the audience as well. So if you have any questions for them, they'd be more than happy to come up and talk a little bit more about their interest in this project. I just wanted to go over a few points that we tried to make in a memo to you earlier this week in regards to the interests that the ownership group has in the property. They've owned this property for probably over a decade and have maintained really great relationships with adjacent property owners during that time. They've done a lot of improvements to the existing property and have continually worked on growing their vision for what they feel like would be a great neighborhood-oriented retail development in this area. Over the last year, they've had a lot of discussions with the property owner in question, of whom they recently purchased the property from, and they've utilized that opportunity to come before you over the past several months and talk about rezoning for that property to accommodate potential development, of which you'll see a site plan laid out for as well. We have done a lot of work on the site plan to try to identify what some of the opportunities could look like as far as a retail development, understanding that, that of course can change in the future based upon tenants and such, but we feel very confident that at this time, as far as the elevation goes, we're very much working with this site plan in terms of what we can provide to the adjacent property owner to the south for different types of access that he needs for his property. I'm going to back up just a little bit again and talk about the last couple of months in terms of where we've gone and the types of meetings that we've had. In September of last year, actually this group, this ownership group, before working with Lloyd Companies, was here to rezone a piece of property that's actually in question, or actually was rezoned through Shape Places to a residential property as well, and they rezoned that to C2. Then, at the end of last year, they were able to get the property that we're talking about tonight under contract with the owner at the time and wanted to move forward with a C2 rezoning as well, given that a portion of that property was zoned commercial prior to Shape Places as well. During that timeframe, they had been working with the adjacent property owner, Mr. Berg and his wife, on doing so because both of those groups had rezoning applications moving forward at the same time, even though they were on different sides of the neighborhood. They've always had a great relationship, at least they feel, with Mr. Berg and have tried to make some accommodations to ensure that he has the same quality of life moving forward after this project as he does today. And one of the concerns that they heard loud and clear from Mr. Berg and his wife was that their current situation is such that they utilize a driveway that's about 20 feet in width. Half of that driveway exists on their property and half exists on the Common Land Two ownership. And so they were very accommodating and ensuring that there is a cross-easement provided so that Mr. Berg and his wife can have access to that driveway in the future as well. In doing so, we, on the site plan, if you can go back to that Jason, in doing that, we provided an extra 30-foot pass that cross-easement. So there's a total of 40-foot buffer there, at least on the west end of the property for Mr. Berg and his wife. And then on the east side of the property, there's a total of 30-foot, which is required by the city as far as a buffer goes. In terms of other considerations, the ownership group has been very willing to make sure that they provide in excess the number of landscape units that are required by, by the city and even work with the adjacent property owners on the species that are going to be planted so that they can just ensure that they continue moving forward with those neighborly relations. One of the other things that I think is important to point out as far as the elevation goes, and you can kind of see that at the bottom of the screen, the way that the topography exists on the site right now, we originally had thought, well, it'd be a great idea to put the drainage pond toward the back end of the site, but the site slopes toward Foss and Arrowhead Parkway. So we moved the pond in that direction and as a result of that, we'll have to probably construct at least an eight-foot, if not 10-foot-high retaining wall along that back corner, which I think ultimately helps with the buffering toward the adjacent property owner's site, just because any sort of cars that are parking in that back area, they will be abutting that retaining wall and won't really have their headlights, you know, encroaching upon his property. And then on top of that wall, there will be a landscape buffer as well. So I feel like it's a really good site plan from that perspective and because it's taking into consideration the adjacent property owners. And I think what's probably often missed with these types of projects is that it's really going to clean up the site to a greater extent and ideally, and Rukel actually, Blount is here as well from Lloyd Companies, but I know she hears often from different groups that, you know, a lot of times neighborhoods want these types of developments because it helps them in creating more of those neighborhood services that we used to have within a smaller community and we're trying to get back to again. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have in relation to the types of discussions that we've had with the property owners and specifically Mr. Berg and his wife as well. Otherwise, any questions that you have about the site plan, I'd be happy to address.
All right, thank you Erica. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
The yellow area, that's where the driveway is, right?
Correct. That is the 10-foot cross-easement that will be provided on this property owner's site.
Any other questions? All right.
Madam Chair, excuse me, I do have one. I noted from the presentation that the two homes are going to be demolished. Was there ever any consideration in the process of saving those homes, knowing that Sioux Falls really needs affordable housing? Was there any thought given that, to that possibility at all?
You know, that's a great question and I can't actually answer that for you. I would probably ask the property owners, the current property owners to answer that.
Hello.
Hi.
Bryant Solberg, 330 North Main, number 201 in Sioux Falls. And to answer your question, no, we haven't considered that because of really, especially that middle house there that you can see, yeah, that one, it's really quite small. And it doesn't lend itself to, you know, trying to get some commercial property, you know, closer to the north. That really, I mean, really helps to remove the houses. So we didn't, you know, we did originally a little bit, but it just wouldn't work for us, so. Anything else?
No.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thanks Erica. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? Please come forward and state your name and address.
I'm Jerry Berg and I'm the property owner just to the south of the two pieces right there. And regarding the driveway, that would be one of the concessions that they've granted me. My contention is that, first of all, I've lived there for 37 years and the idea of coming that deep into the neighborhood is not something that I'm particularly fond of. Originally, when I was first talking with the same neighbor that sold the property, they were trying to figure out whether she would sell this to her north piece or both pieces. And ultimately, to, you know, make her investment pay off in her retirement, she decided on both. And so then the talk was of the fact that they weren't going to demolish her house, but just perhaps rezone, obviously, the north one and maybe the back half. And so during the course of the conversation, it became obvious that they were going to get rid of her house also. So consequently, they're, instead of RD1 going to C2, they're taking a residential property and going to C2. And so although the house that Bryant was talking about is in disrepair, her house is a very nice house. And, you know, her property needs a little bit of upkeep because, you know, trees and so forth, because of her plans to move on. And so my contention is, is that coming that deep into the neighborhood is a problem for me. I do appreciate the concession and we get along quite nicely with the group, so it's not like it's huge contention. But taking it a step farther, if we could go to their proposed plan, two things happen. One, from my perspective, living right next door, my, my drive to Walmart, which is already a short drive, instead of going to Arrowhead, I'm going to use their, their part as a thoroughfare. And I do believe that that's what anybody coming from the southeast or that can figure out going on Arrowhead is a pain, that they'll come through the back way and, and come through there. I own, right across from that driveway, there's two houses that I have purchased over the past 10, 15 years. And so they're going to be removing some of the dirt and moving it all to the northeast, so that'll be lower, as she had mentioned, you know, where the lights would be in regards to my house in that parking lot. So now anybody leaving that parking lot, the lights are going up and obviously into my neighbor's, you know, my tenant's house. So the things I see right off the bat are the thoroughfare and just the way that it's laid out. I'm absolutely not opposed to developing the property and so that's not any part of my argument. It's just coming that far into the neighborhood and the, you know, I'm not a designer, so I don't know what a better plan would be, but I think there's a better plan out there someplace, so.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Berg?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this item?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Tim Weaker, 613 South Hillview Road. My property would be on the west side and from the corner, one property to the south. So if you can imagine, I'm probably about 120 feet from the driveway. My concerns are, with the development coming that far back, I also don't have any problems with commercial development and a commercial development in that area. As you look from Shopko all the way out, the buildings that have been put in that area are running a lot shorter distance back. The restaurant that just went in across the street, the Panda Express, the Culvers, the other side, those are all, I guess you'd call them, short-distance areas. And I think it's something that still can be accomplished with allowing us a little bit more buffer. As you read through some of the stuff in the Shape Sioux Falls, you know, they, they talk a lot about if you're going to be going from a residential to a commercial, some type of a transition and possibly a soft transition. And I don't see this as being one that's doing that. It's basically, we're going from today, we've got our houses and tomorrow, guess what, we're looking right into the back of a retail establishment. I mean, and I do agree from just living in the area, that Lloyd Companies does a great job. I mean, the stuff they put in out there is very nice. It's just, it's, it's something going in very, very close. I mean, it gets a little harder to handle. So that's, I guess, the biggest concern. The second biggest would be the traffic. Hillview is a very narrow road. It's a development that still has one-acre lots, so it kind of gives you some country living inside the city limits at a cost that's considerably less than if you had to go out and buy an acre now. So it's kind of, in a way, going to be taking away a lot of that. You'll get people that'll probably move out and it'll turn into more other rental property or something like that. And when I moved there 10 years ago, I seeked that out and I'm, I know there are only a couple areas of Sioux Falls left that still have that ability. So I guess I'm hoping that there's something done there to help that transition be slower. That farthest south lot still has a residential zoning on the front of it. And, I mean, even that would make it a lot better for us. It pushes the driveway further to the front. It gives a buffer for us. We've been a little bit more quiet beforehand. Surprisingly, with Walmart next door, it isn't bad living there. I mean, with the old mature trees and stuff like that, it's easy to get along with those type of tenants. It's just, this one's going to be putting it right in our yards. So I guess that's my concern. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this item?
Hi, I'm Cheryl Colbrecht, I live at 709 South Hillview Road. And I think I'm just here to kind of reiterate the traffic issues. I don't know if any of you have had an opportunity to be on East Arrowhead Road on a Saturday or Sunday. Trying to get off of Hillview, you don't. You absolutely do not get on the Arrowhead Parkway. And so I'm really concerned about people who will take that short path through the parking lot, taking Hillview rather than waiting for the stoplights or trying to get on to Foss Road. So I'm not, again, just like everyone else, I'm not opposed to development. I am greatly concerned about the traffic and the increased traffic that will come down Hillview. Concerned about the small road, as already has been said, and that there's little kids that live around there and they're riding their bikes. And now we're kind of asking and inviting people to take that road as another access way out of the area. So that's all my concerns are.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that has anything maybe new to add or comment on this item?
I'm Fern Ganning and I live at 705 Hillview Road. And my concern is, in the very near future, when this little narrow road we have now doesn't accommodate that traffic, then they're going to say, well, we need to widen the road or something. They're going to be right on top of our houses because the houses are not back that far now. So I'm wondering, in the future, it's going to cause a lot of problems.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for expressing your concern. One more here. Good evening.
Ryan Tisdale. While I'm not actively involved in this project in any way, I do own property in this general area, just north of here. And I guess I'd point out a couple points. The first being, when this issue first came to the planning commission a couple months back, I actually had a very identical issue at that same meeting that was approved by the planning commission there and then approved by the city council. And a few months back, a very similar project on the, just the west, in the same neighborhood, was approved by the planning commission and then the city council to rezone for commercial use. And it was actually Mr. Berg, who was the applicant on that, which was approved. And his access is off the side streets, exactly how this is planned. And I guess the point I would make, just as a property owner in this area, would be, my understanding of the planning commission is to vote on, is this an appropriate use of this land for the intended? And I guess I'd look across the nation at the main entrance to a Walmart, and in my head, is that logical land for commercial development? And in my mind, that would be yes.
Thank you. All right, anyone else here? All right, commissioners, any, any discussion or a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve for discussion.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion?
Well, first of all, I think having the site plan was very helpful to me to understand what the intended use of this was. It makes a lot of sense to me to take the, obviously the primary drive off of Foss makes a lot of sense. For safety, you want to have a second access, which makes some sense. And this, this appears to be very much kind of in the back corner. So I think that the site plan has tried to mitigate the apparent issue that we've heard from the neighborhood. And ultimately, having all the buffer around here, it is required by Shape Sioux Falls and it is another, yet another good example of how Shape Sioux Falls protects those more abrupt transitions that we do try to be cognizant of as we approve these kinds of things. But in this case, since it is a little more of an abrupt transition, having that extra 30-foot buffer yard really helps a great deal. And I think this project makes a lot of sense. And the rezoning of this makes some sense considering all the rest of the commercial that's in the area.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion?
Maybe somebody else was more familiar with this area. Is there a stoplight at Foss in Arrowhead?
Um...
I mean, commissioners know it?
Yeah, I believe there is.
There is? And they say there was a traffic study done. Was there, how far, I guess the distance, it was hard to tell, is, where is Highland?
Do you want staff to come up and comment on the traffic?
Yeah. Or Hillview. How far is Hillview?
Jeff Schmidt from the City Planning Office.
Jeff, how far do you know is, is Hillview from the existing stoplight on Foss and Arrowhead?
It's probably 500 or 600 feet.
And during the study, do you know, was there any talk about another light at Hillview?
No, there is not a light at Hillview. During the, the neighborhood meeting that we had in this room with the neighbors, the Arrowhead Parkway seems to be a lot of the issues. I mean, it is a very busy street. It's an arterial street, very much like 41st Street on the west side of town, has the same type of traffic volumes. And so they are struggling to get out of the neighborhood. We discussed at the neighborhood meeting, I went back to the traffic engineer Heath, that's talked to this group before, planning commissioners. And they're designing Arrowhead Parkway in 2016 with improvements scheduled for 2017 to improve Arrowhead Parkway. And they'll look at a new traffic signal out here. It's probably going to be on Gordon Avenue, the Collector Street on the west, which is where the other commercial development is that you've already approved. So the neighborhood concerns at the meeting I had here were, well, that made the people on Gordon mad, and I understand that. But, I mean, you could put the signal on Hillview, which will make the people on Hillview mad. But that's what happens when you have a grid network in Sioux Falls. One of the streets is going to get a signal in order to get out. But if you want to be able to have a traffic signal to get out of your neighborhood, someone needs a signal. So it'd go, basically, it goes Sycamore Avenue, then it goes Gordon, Foss, Highway 11.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Jeff?
Yes, sir.
The traffic study, has there been a traffic study done?
No.
Or is it just the engineer making comments?
The traffic engineer was making comments about Arrowhead Parkway, which will be designed in 2016, constructed in 17. They asked the commercial developers out here, the ones that you already approved and this one, and they said, we need a traffic study to see if there's any impacts from your development. There hasn't been a study done yet.
For this project?
Correct.
Very good. Very good. And again, just to reiterate, we need to have a traffic study done before, and it has to be complied with before a permit could be issued.
Before a building permit for either one of the projects. Correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Yep.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Any other discussion?
I think Ryan made a great point of, we've approved a couple of projects in the area that we're in the same, you know, vote is what we're looking at right here. And to me, it looks like, you know, the developer and the owner of this property have made a, you know, try to work with them to, you know, take care of some of the stuff that's going to be coming from the opposite property. And I think they've done pretty well.
All right. Thank you. We have no more discussion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Item seven, 2454, 2015, rezoned from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban Districts to the RD1 Twin Home Town Home Residential Suburban and RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban Districts for allowed forms located east and west of North Pennsylvania Avenue and south of West 54th Street North.
Jason Bieber with Planning and Building Services. This is an application by Richard Bray, Richard Bray to construct some fourplex units on the east side of South, or excuse me, North Pennsylvania Avenue and then rezon some single family and construct some twin homes on the west side of North Pennsylvania Avenue. The proposed twin and town homes will have access to North Pennsylvania Avenue. Further, a secondary fire access will be required at West 54th Street North once the development gets 30 new dwelling units in it. The subject property is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The proposed RD2 Town Home Residential and the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential will provide a good transition to the existing RA2 Apartment Residential uses to the east and then, and of the proposed RD2, then transitioning to the proposed RD1 west of North Pennsylvania Avenue. And then finally, connecting into the existing RS Single Family uses to the west and southwest of this proposed application. And because the subject application is consistent with the Shapes Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Commissioners, any questions for staff? All right. Thank you. Is the applicant here? And if you are, please come forward.
Yes, I'm Richard Bray. I live at 1510 South Raymond Circle. This was in front of the board last month, but I deferred it. I was happy to be out of town. And when I was checking in with Jason to see if there was any neighbors that called in, there was, I think, one or two. So I've got, I got their name and number. And then actually, one of the gals, that's the adjoining landowner to the west, helped me organize a neighborhood meeting. So that's why I deferred it till I could get back to get that done. So we performed that last Thursday evening at 7:00. And I had probably, I believe, six of the adjoining landowners radically through on Ohio Avenue there show up. And I think one was down on Cogle Drive. Their concern was, they, on West Pennsylvania Circle, they didn't want anything of the nature that is up on 54th Street, Marion Road, double decker, or fourplexes. And I explained to them that, that I was only going to look at a twin home layout in that RD on the, on the circle itself. So once I explained that and, and explained that chances are they'd be slab on grade for, you know, for the baby boomers, then they, they thought that was, that was okay. They were glad to hear that. They just didn't want, I mean, they've had such a view for so many years that, and those houses that those people live in, they've got gardens, so they sit up a little higher. So that was probably their, their most concern. They just had some questions about architectural effect and, you know, and how, how it's going to lay out. And I told them it's just a concept, you know, whether, whether a person would go ahead with those twin homes or just build some multi or a single family. But wanted to kind of leave some options open for the partnership that I represent. So, but they all left there with, I think, their questions answered and, and I invited them to show up tonight, but I don't see anybody here.
All right. All right. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair, Richard, you've got, it looks like four lots that sit off by themselves on Pennsylvania. Do you know, to the east across the street, is though, is that developed? Are there houses on those lots across the street?
No. Actually, there's four lots there, but the north lot, next to that drainage way, the city purchased, purchased that from the bank when they had this property. And they have scheduled a bike trail connection there. So the, the other three-
Much to the east to you, of those four lots?
Yes. Those other three lots would be like twin home.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
You can see the drainage way that goes north and west there. And then it comes down to a major drainage way, just to the west of Career. That's a future city park there. So we have all that parkland and you can kind of see a drainage way there if you really squint. But, so we're going to bring that residential neighborhood in with a bike trail into that drainage way. And then you can go north and south, all the way through there and have a lineal park. So Rick pointed that out very clearly and I just wanted to show you kind of, and city does support that. We want to have a city park there.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? All right, commissioners?
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second discussion?
I think this is another good example of that, the soft zoning shifts as we go from RS to RD1 to RD2 makes a lot of sense.
All right. Thank you.
I would also commend the owner for taking the time to talk to the owners or to the other homeowners around the neighborhood and mitigating any issues. So thank you.
I think this will be good for the area just because that, those lots have sat there for quite a many years. I mean, we've sold tons of houses out there and they've just sat there. So I think it's something that, at least get something done out there.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. All right. The motion passes. Thank you.
Item eight, 2734, 2015, rezoned from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District for allowed forms located west of South Surto- Surto Ma Avenue and south of West Stony Creek Street.
The applicant here is Matt Schultz and he is proposing to rezon this .44 acre lot and construct a twin home on it. It is located west of South Surto Ma Avenue and south of West Stony Creek Street. It is sandwiched between some apartment complexes on the north and then, excuse me, and then a existing office lot on the east side with single family residential on the west and south. The proposed zoning does meet the Shapes Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan. The proposed RD1 zoning provides a good transition from the existing apartment complex on the north and the existing old office district that will be future development on the east to the existing single family residential homes on the west and the south. And because the subject, subject application is consistent with the Shapes Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning request. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Jason. Any questions for Jason? All right. Thank you. Is the applicant here? Please state your name and address.
Matt Schultz, 46521, 264th Street in Hartford. And I bought this lot a couple of years ago and I haven't, I was going to build a house on it and I didn't. And so last fall, I went and decided that I thought it was a good place for a twin home with the apartments next door and the open lot behind it that was zoned for offices. And then taken into consideration that out the driveways of it, there's the lots across the road don't have any driveway access there. So there will be no, no drive, so I figured it wasn't going to interfere with much people there. Last fall, I went and talked to all the neighbors around and just knocking their doors and visiting with them. A few of them kind of showed some concerns of having a rent, having it a rental property or whether I was going to sell them. And I'm looking more to build them and sell them than to build them and rent them out. And they just didn't want rent, some of them just said, you know, they'd rather not have them be a cheaper rental. So, and then a few people I wasn't able to contact and so that's where I'm at, I guess.
All right. All right. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? All right. Seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Madam Chair, motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
One quick thing that I had forgot to mention, that house that I have circled there, we did receive an email from them. They couldn't be at the meeting tonight and they had some concerns about property values with this rezoning request. So I wanted to make sure we got that on the record. So.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any discussion?
Much like we saw with item seven, I know from my own personal home shopping experience in the last couple of years, this has been empty, vacant for quite a while. And it'd be nice to see something applied here. And I think this, again, is a good transition between the single family and the higher density apartments there to the north.
I agree with Kurt. That makes a lot of sense.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Item nine, 2696, 2015, conditional use permit in the BCF1 form to allow a funeral home within 250 feet from DD, AD, or MD forms located at the southeast corner of West 81st Street and South Minnesota Avenue.
The applicant here is Dave Erickson with Vandewell Architects. The Miller Funeral Home would like to construct roughly a 6,200 square foot funeral establishment and associated parking lot in this currently vacant, vacant piece of property. This site may look a little familiar to you. I believe we approved a conditional use here a couple of years ago under the old ordinance. And then once Shape Places became effective, that conditional use became null and void. They hadn't started construction or pulled a permit. So now they are back with the similar request to what they had before. The concept plan does indicate two accesses off of 81st Street. And these accesses will be required to be approved by engineering. The proposed funeral establishment should not provide a significant traffic impact to the existing residential neighborhood to the east. Most of the traffic will be filtered to 81st and Minnesota and then go out on Minnesota south or north. And finally, they will be required a Level A and B buffer yard on the north and east sides to buffer from the existing single family and multifamily uses. And because the subject application does provide clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed and the increased traffic should be funneled towards South Minnesota Avenue instead of it through the existing residential neighborhood, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Jason. Any questions for Jason? All right. Thank you. And would the applicant please come forward?
I'm Joel Vipon with Miller Funeral Home, 507 South Main. I'm not actively involved in the planning process of this facility, but I can answer any questions about the nature of the facility that you may have. It is designed as South Dakota Funeral Law states that it is a visitation chapel. It is not a facility that will allow us legally to perform preparation and care work such as embalming and/or cremation. There will be no facility for those two actions to be there. It's strictly for visitation and funeral ceremonies only.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Are you then going to keep the facility downtown?
Oh, yes. Yes. This is just in addition to the other facilities in the city that we have, one on 41st and Valley View, and then this downtown location right here.
Thank you.
Joel, again, so your, this facility is going to be similar to the one on West 41st Street?
It is, I believe, from what I've been told, that it may be slightly smaller than the one on 41st and Valley, Valley View, but I don't want to quote that. But it is going to be the same nature of, of structure, basically slab on grade, no, no basement or anything like that.
Very nice facility out there.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? All right. Seeing none, I would look for commission action, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Only that, from the testimony, the type of facility this is going to be, it probably won't add a great deal of traffic to that future area where there's probably going to be a lot of traffic. So I don't see a problem with this.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. All right. The motion passes.
Item 10, 2741, 2015, alternative site plan to provide an alternative landscape plan to allow 100% of the required street trees in the right-of-way located at 2,000 West 41st Street.
This is an application by Kyle Rafe with Co-op Architecture. The Verizon Wireless is looking at redeveloping the current Valentino site and constructing a retail store. And they would like to provide the required street trees in the city right-of-way. The proposed landscaping requirement requires one tree for every 50-foot of frontage for a total of 10 trees on the site. And as the ordinance states, 20% of those trees can be allowed within the city right-of-way. The applicant is proposing to keep, there's three existing mature deciduous trees in the right-of-way as well as constructing four additional ones. The existing mature deciduous shade trees, they count two for one, so they will count as six of the 10 required. And then the four additional ones will, will make up the difference and they'll have the 10 that's required by ordinance. And there's also a, a small request on the west side of this. There's an existing retaining wall that's on the property line. They're looking at keeping that retaining wall on the property line instead of having to move it within the buffer yard. The existing, as well-proposed deciduous shade trees in the right-of-way should provide the necessary front yard landscaping for the redeveloped site. If this application is approved by the planning commission, this applicant can retain the three existing mature trees as well as plant four additional deciduous shade trees within the city right-of-way. If the proposed plan is denied, two of these existing mature shade trees will have to be removed along with eight additional trees constructed or placed somewhere within the front yard setback. Finally, the existing retaining wall along that west side will have to be demolished also. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed and the proposed front yard landscaping should adequately meet the intent of the ordinance, staff does recommend approval of this alternative site plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jason. And just to reiterate there, the main reason is because the mature trees already exist. That's the request for this? Is that correct?
Within the right-of-way, yes. And we are in the nature of retaining as many existing trees as we can get.
All right. Any questions for staff? All right. Thanks, Jason. Would the applicant please come forward?
Kyle Raff with Co-op Architecture, 300 North Hills, Suite 120. Yeah, as Jason said, that basically, we're trying to meet the Shape Places buffer yard requirements and work within what's already there. So as he said, on the west side, there's a decorative concrete fence slash retaining wall that's on the property line that meets the buffer yard. It's four foot high, but it's on the property line. So we would have to basically leave that or take that down and then put up another one. So just kind of redundant there on the west side. Then on the east side, there's those three large mature shade trees that, that form the, kind of can see it there. So if we can plant our new ones within the right-of-way, it just saves those trees and also continues that street presence of the trees.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item?
Larry Scott, 704 East 20th Street. I own the property just to the west of the, two apartment buildings just west of this property, and the wall they're talking, I don't have a problem with this at all, but the wall that they're talking about taking down, quite a few kids that live in that apartment building, and people tend to think the parking lot is a through-street, and they come in to turn around a lot. I was just wondering kind of what kind of buffer were they going to put up to keep people from going through there and kids, I don't want kids running in their parking lot and things like that. I was just mainly wondering how that was going to be handled.
Sure, okay, thank you. Could the applicant please come forward again and maybe answer that question?
The wall will, the wall will stay, so there won't be access, yeah, yeah. We just don't want to move it, we would be required to take it down and then move it back 10 feet, so we just want to.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address this item? Great.
Elisa Steenbrook at 3208 South Willow. I live four houses north on Willow on the east side, and I just want to make sure that I understand. So it sounds like the, the request is to keep everything as it is, right? Keep the retaining wall, keep the trees, not to remove anything, is that correct? And that's the only thing that's on the table tonight? Okay.
Okay, you're good? All right, thank you. All right, seeing no one else that would like to address this item, I'll look for commission action.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think it's great that they want to keep, you know, the existing trees. I mean, if we took them down and planted new ones, I mean, it makes no sense. So, to keep those mature trees and keep the neighborhood, so.
I agree. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. All right, the motion passes.
Item 11, 2725, 2015, initial development plan for the Prairie Creek Memory Care Institutional Campus Plan Unit Development, located at the northeast corner of West 57th Street and South Solberg Avenue.
Diane Decoyer with Planning again. The project before you is an initial development plan for the Good Samaritan Society. It's Prairie Creek Memory Care. The subject property is 3.59 acres and zoned as an S2 PUD. Institutional campus PUD allows for construction of business and community facilities of a limited size, multifamily residential and commercial uses under 25,000 square feet upon approval of a final development plan. Final development plans that are consistent with the approved initial development plan may be reviewed and approved administratively. The property is located northeast of 57th and Solberg. The site is located directly east of Good Sam's National Campus and to the south of existing independent living and twin home and apartments by the Good Samaritan Society. The proposed plan indicates an NF2 neighborhood residential facility formed to the east. It's a one-story, 27,275 square foot, 32-bed unit memory care facility. Due to the slope of the site, sidewalks from 57th are not directly accessible to the structure, therefore pedestrians must access it coming around to Creekside Circle. Similarly, due to great changes, a berm and retaining wall will be constructed along 57th, which will also serve as a safety measure for the facility's clients. To the west of the facility is a proposed AD1 attached dwelling suburban twin home duplex for future twin homes for independent living clients. The two single-story twin home units are planned for 5,500 square feet with two stall garages per unit. The twin homes are noted as future in the next two to five years for construction. A Level A buffer yard is required between the NF2 and the AD1 parcels. A Level A buffer yard is a 10-foot setback with a two-foot berm or a four-foot high fence and 20 units of landscaping between them. The applicant is required to submit an alternative parking plan for the reduction of parking spaces. It will also need to be approved by the Planning Commission. Signed standards for the development will also need to be submitted for review of the final development plan before a signed permit is granted. Because the subject application complies with the policies and design standards of Shape, Sue, Places 2035 Comprehensive Plan, the development is mutually compatible with adjacent existing developments, and the initial development plan is consistent with regulations of the requested PUD district, staff recommends approval of this request.
Thank you. Any questions for Diane?
Diane, you're saying that they have to come back with an alternative parking plan? Because right now, they only show 24.
Yeah, I think that 24 is correct, and for a facility like this, what is required, I think at peak period, they have 12 full-time staff, staff and volunteers, and then because it's a 32-bed facility, it would be one parking stall per bed. But again, this is for memory care unit, so most of those people would not be driving, as you might imagine. So they will come back with an alternative site plan to reduce the number of parking.
Well, I guess, you know, the reason I was saying that, and I'll bring it up now, is the fact that that only allows for 12 visitors for 32 beds also. Otherwise, there's no parking left. I mean, that's, seems a little short, so, but they got to come back with an alternative plan.
But they have to come back, yeah, and they'll come back before you for approval on that.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks, Diane. Would the applicant please come forward?
Ed Lund, Co-Khazard Architects. Greg Amble is out of town tonight. We are the ones that developed the plan and this entire area as far as answering the question on the parking. There is, the Good Samaritan Society owns this entire area. There's skilled nursing, there's senior housing, there's twin homes, and there's, as you can see on the plans, there's additional parking to the north. You know, our primary concern was that these are memory care facility where people are not going to be driving, you know, they are managed 24 hours a day. I agree, there are only 12 places, but there is parking across the street, and we will provide that alternative parking facility. Diane did a superb job as far as what the plans are and what the development is, so any questions I could answer?
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and address this item? All right, seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Madam Chair, move to approve, item 11.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. All right, the motion passes.
Item 12, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the revised ordinances of the city by revising planning and zoning application fees.
Good evening, Jeffrey Schmidt again for the planning items. With the new House bill that was just passed this legislative session, beginning in July, we have to have new signs posted for all our rezonings and conditional uses. We have a mock-up of the sign, and it is a very large sign that we will have, okay? But based upon the size that's been required by state law, it has to be 24 inches by 18 inches with bold lettering. To get something like that, that's paper to withstand, we're going to put it on core board and then put it on a metal stand. So based upon that, our fees are going up. They're going up for $75 for conditional uses and $150 for change of zones. That's four signs for your conditional uses, because they got to go on four corners, and there's eight signs for your change of zones, because you have two public hearings they have to list. I've given this information out to all the developers, applicants that we basically have in the community, and this sign's been down at our customer service counter for at least a month, so the community knows about it. But I think in general, most of the community members will be supportive, because now they don't have to pound stakes in anymore, and they'll, will have to build their own sign boards, but the cost will be going up. So with that, any questions?
Madam Chair, is that the exact size?
That's the actual size, correct. They're going to be orange and yellow. Yellow's the conditional uses and orange is other rezonings.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Jeff. Is there anyone else that would like to address this item? No, okay. I am looking for commission action.
Move to approve, item 12.
A second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Item 13, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, revisiting the project plan and boundary for tax increment finance district 2014A Tyler Block TIF.
Hey, good evening, Planning Commission. Brent O'Neal with the Community Development Department, here to talk about an application that the Planning Commission approved regarding TIF at its March 2015 meeting. It was shown up here on the screen, the boundary we looked at. I'll give a little bit more of a summary of the project, but really, one of the issues that came up at that meeting was regarding the boundaries and the properties that were included, including those both owned and controlled by the developer who proposed projects in the district, as well as other property owners. After the opportunity to speak more directly with property owners, the opportunity to speak more directly with the TIF applicant, it was decided that it was best to make a modification to the TIF boundary. So what you see on the screen is on the left, the boundary that was approved originally, and then on the right, our revised boundaries or our proposed revisions to the boundaries. Given your past approval and given the beautiful weather outside, I do intend to be fairly brief, so I have one more slide, and then have brought my other presentation with, so we can certainly, at your discretion, review any other point that you'd like to, or that was discussed that night. Again, this is really kind of a unique project downtown. It will result in the demolition of a property and reuse of a parcel just north of the Sunshine property. Above, you have the rendering of kind of the four-story, 82-unit workforce housing project. The total project is going to be about $12 million. We received a request of $1.6 million for that. The TIF plan, as proposed then and proposed today, supports $1.5 million, and that is, you know, acceptable to all parties involved. Also wanted to point out on the drawing there, again, showing the revised boundaries, Project One is the project that really is the impetus for TIF. Project Two is a future project contemplated by the developer, and that project would just only support the increment potentially available for the district to pay down of the district. With that, I would open up for questions, or certainly I'll let you know that both Kevin Keating and Norm Drake, representing the project, are here as well.
All right, thank you.
Right, thank you. You're saying that the TIF request is not going up, right?
Correct, correct.
Wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, absolutely. There's very little change with the plan, really, other than the, the reference to the properties.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I ask some questions? So, and I apologize, Brent, I wasn't at the, on the commission in the March. So when I look at the project plan on page five, I see five parcels. Who owns all those parcels?
The two gentlemen I referenced, Norm Drake and Kevin Keating, they either own, represent, or have control of those properties.
Okay, so they're not owned by other property owners?
Correct.
Okay. And then I have some questions, four questions on the project plan itself. So if you could educate us, what is, what is the definition of workforce level housing?
Sure. I think workforce housing is really tied to that level of housing that's, that's both affordable and geared towards economic development.
Okay.
So those, and I know Norm and Kevin might have a better answer than me, but you know, those, those people that are really looking for that type of housing.
Okay, I can save that question for them.
Sure.
And then on page five of the, of the project plan, can you clarify the public benefit eligible costs? I see there's, there's one point, on page five, it's $1.5 million, and then when you turn the page, then there's some additional money for financing, professional fees, administrative fees, which is $2.4 million. And then can you, when you're doing that, on the slide, you have a $1.6 million, so there's three different numbers?
Sure.
So can you clarify what those costs are as why, and then also what the difference is?
Sure, the $1.6 is really the request, the project financing to do the project.
Okay.
Day one, the sources of funding they need for the project. Financing costs are eligible. So what you have on page five is a listing of all the costs that are proposed to be paid for.
Okay.
On the page six, that second line, financing costs are the amounts that would be eligible as far as financing costs. And then the last item there, grants, is really a summary, it's, you'll see it's a line-for-line match for the other items on page five, and that's something that we do that's allowed by statute, really, that gives the city and, and the parties involved the flexibility in administering the TIF.
Okay, but the TIF request is $1.6, or?
The TIF request is, is $1.6. Of 12, of 12 million dollar project costs that they will need to do this project, they're asking for $1.6 of that to be included through TIF.
Okay. And then my next question is, so the developer is going to invest $12 million now?
The, the total project will be 12 million.
Okay.
$1.6 of that will be invested through tax increment financing.
Okay, and so the assessed value would be?
I have to reference my notes here.
Sure.
A little over 7 million, I believe we have 7.4 in the staff report.
And then my last question is, has, in the project plan, or in your analysis, is there a quantified economic development? Or is this, like, are you, I know that you can be blight or economic development, or are you saying that it's one or both?
Sure, it's, it, well, I think in this particular case, I mean, we really feel in our evaluation that it, it certainly takes what you consider blighted property.
Sure.
And also provides that economic development benefit to the community, so, yes.
Okay, but the economic development portion has not been quantified?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I mean, I, we didn't reference that terribly specifically in the plan.
I guess in summary, I think this is a great project. I, that's, you know, between Sunshine and the post office, and there's, you know, there's a lot of opportunity for improvement in that neighborhood, and I'm sure the neighbors would appreciate it. This looks like a great project, so again, I commend the, the developer for bringing this forward to the city for a TIF project.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Oh, yes.
Oh, I've got questions too, Madam Chair. Brent, forgot what I was going to say now. You talk about two projects. Is this amount of TIF dependent on both projects going through? You talk about the affordable housing, and then you kind of said then there might be a project coming down the road.
Yeah.
If that project doesn't happen, does the $1.6 not happen, or the $1.55?
There certainly is a potential for that, and as this TIF has been contemplated, one of the advantages, so to speak, from the city perspective, is with the developer on the first project, also being the developer on the second project, the developer is willing to basically take the risk that Project Two doesn't happen, so to speak.
You and I've had a discussion in the past about a previous TIF. It's my understanding that a TIF, once awarded, is good for five years. The developer has five years to.
Right, there's a five-year window, yeah.
Five-year window.
Yeah.
A change of usage. If we have a TIF presented to us as an affordable housing project, a couple of years goes by, if that change of usage were to change, does your office, the city council, get a chance to? the city council, get a chance to relook at that TIF?
Sure. Sure. If I understand the question, if, if the project at the onset or before it commenced has changed, absolutely.
Is that a requirement? In other words, yeah, we're saying this is going to be eligible for a TIF, it's one point five million dollars, but what's being representative to us changes? Do they have to come back for approval?
If the scope changes, I think one of the evaluations we make is, does the plan in any way contemplate that change? And if the plan had not contemplated that change, then it would be our recommendation, it would have to come back.
So it'd depend on your office as far as interpreting the change?
It would, as we'd also consult with our legal team, and we just, again, really interpret whether that change altered the intent or not.
If I can go back to the first question, what I'm thinking here is that part of the increase in taxes is going to be dependent on both projects, not just one. If the one just happens and the taxes, the amount that goes up doesn't service the one point five, at that point, it's the developer's problem to pay it out of pocket, I suspect.
Yeah, I mean, the obligation of the city is really what, what's generated by the TIF, so that's accurate.
Thank you, Brent.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right, would the applicant please come forward? Please state your name and address, and if there's anything else you'd like to add.
Kevin Keating, fifteen twelve North One Hundred Thirty-third Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Really, same, same project, same concept as what we were planning before, when we were before you. The only, the only difference was is after we had this meeting, we had some feedback that we hadn't received beforehand about the TIF district, and we decided, rather than argue it, we would just change the district to accommodate the request. So everything else is pretty much as it was. If there's any other questions, be glad to help.
I'll ask my same, Madam Chair, may I ask the same question? What, the definition of workforce, affordable workforce?
Workforce housing?
Yep. And what does that mean for, like, level of rent or cost of buying a unit, et cetera?
Yeah. These are, these are for rent, they're not for sale.
Okay.
The affordability for this project with the, with respect to the tax credit units is sixty percent of area median income.
Okay.
And we're trying to target tenants that are working downtown, thus the workforce housing. Tenants that can afford, you know, rents at that, at that forty to fifty, sixty percent rents, not below, we're not targeting very low income in this. It's kind of the nature of the financing that we're using that prevents us from doing that. So that's the, that's the income targets that we're, that we're trying to reach.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Kevin, are, are you going to approach the state to try to get some tax credits to help complete this project?
Yes.
Well, it was originally presented to us, that wasn't the situation. I guess we were told that they were going to go through the state, it was on a bonding type of different program, four percent interest.
And that's, that's, that's the same. We're, we're not going through the competitive nine percent process. The, the four percent tax credit is available through the tax exempt bond. You make an application to the South Dakota Housing Development Authority for a four percent bond. If it's approved, the credits come with it, basically.
Is there a limit to that four percent tax money?
There, there is a limit, but it's, this is a very underutilized product. There, there hasn't been a, an applic, well, there hasn't been a successful application under the four percent program since the last time I did it, in two thousand and eight.
And I might be confusing it with someone I've had some, some experience with. But that's a very, very, the one I've had experience with is very competitive. There's usually not enough.
That's, that's the nine percent credit. The nine percent credit is very competitive, and, and it requires, in order, in order to be successful in those applications, you've got to more severely discount your rents, you know, target the lower-income tenants. As a result, you get more credits. Under the four percent, you're getting, you know, less than half as many credits, but it's not a competitive process.
So there are some rent limits then, once you, if you were to get those credit.
Yeah, it's, it's still.
It's based on median income.
Yeah, we're still subject to the sixty percent rent limits.
That's what I thought it was, Kevin. I got a little confused for a minute there.
No problem.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
I just have one other question. The twelve million dollars, is that for both projects or just one of the projects?
That's this project. That's the first project.
The first project. And is the second project, is that the six million dollar project then, or?
Uh, the, the second project is, was it six? Five?
Five, okay.
Yeah. And, you know, from, from our perspective, having the, knowing that we've got the TIF on that project, and that's eligible, it's kind of an incentive for the developer to, to see that that gets done. Because
Sure.
It, it's going to help the first project. So there's incentive for us to make sure that that second project gets done.
Okay. Well, if you're investing eighteen million, or seventeen million dollars, and the economics in this TIF are at a tax assessment of ten million dollars, I think that's very, very conservative. So I think that, particularly if you build two projects, you actually have no problem paying out this TIF, so.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this item? All right, seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to designate the project boundary for tax increment district, twenty-fourteen A, as proposed for submission to the city council. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Right, the motion passes. And I think now we need a motion to adjourn.
We need you to do a motion to approve the plan, because that is changing a little bit.
Okay.
The project plan.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'd also like to make a motion to adopt the project plan as proposed for tax increment district, twenty-fourteen A, for submission to the city council also.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes. Yes.
Opposed, same sign. All right, the motion passes.
Madam Chair, Danny Brown from the attorney's office. Now that you've designated the district, you should also make a motion as to whether or not this planning commission wants to recommend approval. So that's the second motion you should make now, with respect to the district.
Oh, that's the one. Oh, the second line on it.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Want me to do it?
Madam Chair.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to recommend forming the tax increment district, twenty-fourteen A.
Okay, just to clarify, this is the third, I just want to be sure, this is the third item being voted on here? That's what I'm counting right now.
It wouldn't be a third item. It's, it's the first item with respect to the district that has two parts. They voted on designating the district, which was a vote that passed. And then the second motion after that should be a motion as to whether or not they want to recommend approval to form that district to the city council.
Didn't you guys do that? I, I'm just trying to clarify, because I've, I've heard two things already voted on.
The two things that were voted on, one was the formation of the district, and then the other one was adoption of the plan.
Okay, so now this is a third thing to vote on?
Third motion.
Well.
I'm just trying to clarify for, for, for the record, to, to make sure that everyone is following.
Okay. Well, in order to clarify, you passed the motion, designated the district. That's what I heard, and that's what you guys voted on unanimously and approved. And then you went straight into voting on the plan, which unanimously approved. And so at this point, you'd like to give a, you should give a recommendation to the city council as to whether or not the city council should approve the district, and you, or deny the district. And you should make it, and then you should vote on whether or not you should
On our recommendation to the city.
Recommendation to approve the plan, or not approve the plan.
All right.
Essentially what you're doing is, before you make a recommendation of what the city council should do, you have to designate the boundaries in order to make a recommendation as to whether or not it should be approved. And then once you do that, you need to adopt a plan, and then you need to make a recommendation as to whether or not that plan should be approved by the city council.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
Yeah. When I made the first motion to designate it, I also should have incorporated the motion to recommend to the city council forming the tax increment district for item number one on this.
So now your motion is to?
My motion is to recommend forming the tax increment district.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign.
We have to do the plan now.
Yep. And now, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the project plan for tax increment district, twenty-fourteen A.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second for approval of the project plan. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. And I think we are good.
One more motion, is there?
To adjourn.
Now I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.